of a resolution to appropriate. Start that again. Good evening. It is July 28th. It is 6:36 on the dot and today we do have a special agenda to address a public hearing and action taken by the council in new business. And the content of that action is the appropriation of 1.5 million dollars for improvements to the libraries. And so with that, I believe Sharon, do you have a statement as far as the public hearing notice? Would you like to read that? Or I can go ahead and read it if you want. Okay. Just read the statement here. The purpose of this public hearing is to solicit public input regarding the proposed additional appropriation of $1,500,000, $1,500,000 for additional costs caused by the current inflation environment related to the construction, furnishing and equipment, equipping of a new Prosser Library and renovations to P.Fit Faith McMahon Library, which such appropriation being funded with a $1 million grant received from the state of Connecticut, Public Library Construction Grant for the Prosser Library Project, and $356,358 from the town of Bloomfield's Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund, and $143,642 from the fiscal year 2023 General Fund Operating Budget. With that, we will begin our public hearing. The content is to be pertaining to the item on the agenda, which is the library projects. If you haven't done so quite yet, please sign in at the front desk. I'm here and we're going to address, I think that's worse than that. Speakers get three minutes, if you are Bloomfield residents, to address this council. Please state your name and your address. And we'll get going. Our lovely assistants here will take the timer. And please, so we will go ahead and start with the remote attendee because I only see one hand, and then we'll move to the in-person room. And I really want to thank everyone for coming in person today. So with that, Linda Pagani, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Linda Pagani for currency road. I support the appropriation of 1.5 million dollars for additional costs incurred by the two library building projects due to unforeseen inflation affecting communities worldwide. The Bloomfield Public Libraries are essential community resources for our town, and I urge you to adopt the resolution. And while I have you, your attention, I also support the use of project labor agreements for the library building projects and encourage you to endorse this. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Mike Oliver, third generation Bloomfield, live at 92 Glenwood Avenue. I just want to speak about supporting the PLA at the library. Without union wages, there's no way I would be able to have the house that I have in this town and be able to provide my family for my family. I'm a single father. And without those wages, there's no way as a single parent that I would be able to be part of this community and support my household, my taxes, just, just everything in general. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Brown. I live at 52 Gilbert Avenue, Bloomfield. And I would like to say that these wages, we definitely need them. Me, I'm a struggling single guy with two kids and it's really tough out here. And thank you guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bloomfield resident for over 35 years. Union made, union strong. And I do believe that Bloomfield needs to be kept strong. So I'm for everything that is union. And the reason why I'm still in Bloomfield is because of union. Good night, everyone.
Hello, everybody. Been a resident of Bloomfield for quite a long time. I've been an ironworker for 22 years. We need the union wages in Bloomfield. I do a lot of traveling, 365 days a year sometimes. We need to work here. Sometimes it's nice to work at home. We're spending money at home. So we like to keep the money in our community. And that's all I got to say for today. Thank you.
Good evening. It's been a long road for me. I'm a second generation ironworker. My daddy, I was born on his money. I've been doing this business for 32 years. First and foremost, every guy that came up here, I'm with that. It's the most important thing is to keep your money at home. First of all, spend your money at home. Second of all, I believe that unions is the way to go anyway, because they do it a safe manner. They have skills for over four years. You do 4,000 hours. I got into business in 1990. The business has changed, just like everything around you. The inflation is kicking everybody's butt. Can't go to a gas station. Let's just start with that. Just to get food, I have children, I have four children. Fortunately, I was able to put my children through college. That's the, that's the biggest thing to me, just to go to college. And all four of them have succeeded. I believe that each and every one of you guys here, female, we get up at four o'clock in the morning. I don't care if it's down in Foxwood. I don't care where it is. We travel the states. We're the last of the dinosaurs, believe in it. I've got weld burns all over my body. I'm a welder. I have had the opportunity to go to New York and see how they operate. I've spent 18 years there. So when people come in here and they blah, 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 we could do this, we could do that. They come in, they take your money and they leave. This is not fair. When you go cheap, you go non-union, you're going to get what you paid for. But as a union man, I was raised on this money. You have to believe in the source and the source is at home. When you come home, you want to be in one piece. Unions work safe. They work, they have a plan of safety. They have a plan on how to finish the job on time. They try to instill, to bring more people for the fair wages, honest work, honest money. There can't go anything wrong than that. You know, I, I support the police department, volunteers, the schools. I think the schools can come up with the game first, first and foremost. As a library, we want as a person of color to have your children go to these libraries. First of all, we, we sit here and we, we, you know, the, 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 the strongness of a union is a family. We're never going to change. I don't care about the money. At the money, the money point is you have to have an honest.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I do want to remind our upcoming speakers that this, this is a public hearing regarding the library project. Thank you so much. We do have an online person. I'm just going to grab here, Gail Riley, and then we'll go back to our in-person speakers.
Hi, Gail Riley, 8 Maple Avenue, Bloomfield. I've lived in this town all my life. I grew up going to the library when it was on Blue Hills Avenue and the McMahon Library. I am for appropriating that 1.5 million. My only request is if at the end of this building project, if any of that 1.5 million isn't used, or at least the money that's being reallocated from accounts, Bloomfield accounts, town accounts, if that money could be put back where it was taken from, if it is not needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kenneth Fosallo. I grew up in this town and I was raised with union parents. My grandfather was a firefighter in this town. He did a lot of volunteer work at the church right behind us. He did the work at the Philly House, had me working there as a teenager. And I'd be pleased to be for the Prosser Library and the upcoming of the new kids in the apprentice program. It would be a great opportunity for them in their future. And I'd be willing to go the extra mile to help them and guide them in the right direction. And I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roy Hertzlick. I've been a Bloomfield resident for 23 years. I've been a union member for 23 years and six months. And in that time, I've had the pleasure and luxury, as we talked about, traveling and expenses of working in town, maybe six months. I would love to see this project go with the union nod and get myself and a lot of other guys to work. My kids have grown up and I've got grandkids now and I'd love to be able to tell them that grandpa helped build that library. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity. My name is Brian Scully. I live at 39 Kenwood Circle. I'm born and raised in Bloomfield. I'm here today to support the PLA agreement for the Prosser Library. I'm currently working out in Mansfield, Connecticut, which is a drive. So to have an agreement for Bloomfield residents to work in town is a great opportunity for all of us. And I hope we can move forward with that agreement. Thank you.
Just a quick reminder here that we, the public hearing is of regards to the 1.5 million dollar allocation, or excuse me, appropriation from the town council regarding the two library projects. Who's next? Ms. Cindy Lloyd.
Good evening. Stay safe from messing up. Good evening. Cindy Lloyd, 5 Wish Street Drive, Bloomfield, Connecticut, born and raised, daughter of a Bloomfield police officer, retired Bloomfield police officer and detective myself. I would like to encourage the council to appropriate the 1.5 million dollars for the library projects. And additionally, seeing all these folks in the parking lot was amazing because I'm A&R Local 4200, Union Strong, steward when I was a cop, steward now for 12 years. The monies, the circulation of the dollar, we know in many communities leaves less than one turnaround. And so as an aside to asking your support for the project, I absolutely ask for your support to consider using unionized workers for this project. It is critically important from the perspective of the circulation of the dollar, the safety that was mentioned is critical, there's standards. And if we do have any mishaps, think about potentially with some non-union workers, it could be a potential litigious situation for the town, which is something that we definitely don't want to incur. So again, thank you guys for all coming out. I support the project. I hope the council does. And I do ask that you support unionized workers as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I live at 34 Fairfield Lane in Bloomfield. Been a resident for about 18 years, a union electrician for 35 years. I've traveled a lot in my time. And let me tell you, when we have work in this area, it's great. So I support the building and I would like to use union labor because it is safer. And like everybody, consider that because when something really does happen, the union is behind you. All right. Thank you. Well, he just wanted me to know, I'm newly elected business manager too of the Hartford Electricians. All right. And we're looking to help our Bloomfield residents too and get involved with our electrical industry. So we're looking for help. All right. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My trades, fellow tradespeople went up here and told you that union is the best, is the strongest, is the safest, and that's not a lie. I definitely support the 1.5 million. I live on 93 Brookline Avenue, I'm sorry, Bloomfield resident for 16 years. I think for me, it's, the union is very, very much dear to my heart. I started off in the job funnel program. I came through the lowest, the lowest way possible into the union. I support myself and my family and an aging mother on these wages. I am also afforded opportunity. That's what the union does. When you look at me, you see opportunity. I came in as a rank and file apprentice. I came in through the Yolanda's program and then had to bust my hump and work my way up. I was then voted as a third year apprentice on the executive council for the regional board. I was the first black female to do it. The only reason why I was afforded that opportunity is because the union, as long as, as well as being safe, is inclusive. As far as traveling, we all get up and travel and it would be great to continue to work in my backyard. I have built the Anna Grace School and I also did the Cracked Museum Academy through my apprenticeship. So this town and this union are pretty much my life, my bread and butter, my heart. And when you spend money, please think about all of our testimonies and then think about the opportunities that you're given to fellow men and women in this area. Thank you very much.
Yeah, my name is Lee Cross Hamilton, resident of 22 Jackson Road, Bloomfield. I've been in the union for like 20, 28 years and I support this program. Matter of fact, I just paid some taxes today. 1,400.
Call me by surprise. I just want to say how grateful I am to be born in America whose democracy allows an individual like me, from the humble beginnings, to be able to come before distinguished friends, family and fellow union ironworkers. I'm grateful to have this opportunity. I was fortunate to be one of four African-American contractors on the Duncan Donuts baseball field. We are proud and we use union help and being an ex-ironworker is the only way to go. They not only pay their bills, but they vote for you. I guess that's all I got to say.
Just a reminder, the public hearing is regarding the appropriation of 1.5 million for our two library projects.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gallamore. Been a Bloomfield resident for about 30 years. I've been in the union for about 28 years, which my first son is 28 in a couple of months. Started as an apprentice about 15, 16 years ago, started my own business. The, as far as a PLA situation, that's definitely important because if it wasn't for that, you know, as far as like living a decent life and transferring that into starting a business and helping your fellow union members to, you know, live a decent life also, you know? So that's pretty much the main thing. PLA also keeps people honest. I think that's the main thing. You know, without it, without that, there are a lot of people get away with, you know, funny stuff. So that's definitely a key part of any successful project, I think. Thank you.
I realize none of y'all know who I am. I'm Rick Row, a local minority union company. I'm all for the PLA. I believe also we should have a residency requirement and also a Bloomfield company preference, if possible. I'm not going to sit up here on a soapbox all day, but go union.
Good evening. Kevin Goff, 5 Bear Ridge Drive. I want to obviously come here tonight to support the library and support the funding. I want to thank the council after the last meeting, the excellent work done by our finance director, the finance subcommittee in finding the funds to keep this moving forward because has been, has been pointed out, a library is one of the most important community assets for all of our citizens and serves the community in so many ways that's hard to describe. I also, in listening to the testimony tonight, I also want to agree completely that we need to have the project labor agreement. I think what you've heard tonight is really what we've all been trying to attain for some time. We want people who live in the community to work in the community. We want our money to stay here. We don't want our money, you know, we don't want outside workers from Texas and Louisiana coming in to build our buildings. And what I want is I do want all of you that work on this building, I want you to be able to look at that building, the two buildings, the renovation. I want you to be able to look at it with your kids, five, 10 years and say, I built part of that. And I think that's extremely important. Thank you very much.
My name is Rollo Jones. I live at 16 Richard Lane. Been there for about 40 years. I'm here tonight to support the library. I'm not union. I have nothing against the union. But I do have something against the system and the union and you guys is part of this system. What I saw out here in this, in this parking lot, I would love to see that on some of these jobs here in Bloomfield. What I mean about that is, look at this. Okay, minorities, all these projects that you guys have done here in Bloomfield was like minorities. And I am a minority freak. I created the MCC Minority Graded Council 20 years ago just for this, to be able to see the black and brown peoples out here along with the whites. For some strange reason, it's not happening. I pay taxes here in Bloomfield, pay just as much as taxes than anybody else in this room, probably more. Been here for 40 years. I never laid a brick in Bloomfield. I never poured an ounce of concrete in Bloomfield. Why? Why? Can nobody answer that? It's not that they can't answer, they won't answer. I know my time is gone, it's running out, but I'm going to say what I got to say. It's time for you guys to get up off of your tush. I'm serious. Time to get up. Because Bloomfield is minority. Any way you put it, that's it. You can lump it, do anything else you want with it. But while I'm, I'm here tonight is to say just what I want, what I'm just finished saying. Because I work with the communities, I work the community half, I work with Yolanda, I work with all the communities. I teach classes, masonry and for the state, for job funds to get the minorities out in the field. At some point in time, the unions gonna have to stop being so damn dumb selfish. Pick up some of these people that we're training. They not all in here. How can you say that? You just one individual. You don't know what you're talking about. I'm not going to get, get, get in on that. You don't know what you're talking about. Okay? So that's what, that's what I'm standing up here tonight to say and I'm not up here to debate. I'm, I'm not up here to debate. You are nobody else. And I would appreciate it that we all could get our heads together, that we all can march together. The money is great. Non-union money is great. It all spins. It all look the same. Same dead president, only union money, there's all, only those guys.
Mr. Rollo, thank you so much.
Okay.
So much.
Oh, you're kicking me out.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you all so much. We're going to ask for some decorum in the room here in our chambers.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Okina Aaron, a third year apprentice from Bloomfield. And I would like to say I support the library that's coming. And as a resident of the Bloomfield, that would be very good for the union. So we can get more work out there, you know? So I support it a lot. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Victor Dally. I live at 10 Brees and I'm driving Bloomfield. And I live in Bloomfield like 32 years now. And I'm an ironworker for 18 years and I'm just ready for Tyree Bar. What was it, guys? Ready for Tyree Bar. I don't know what to say.
Kenny Pearson, 229 Dunkester Road. I'm here tonight speaking for myself and also speaking as president of the Friends of the Bloomfield Libraries, representing many people who could not be here tonight. Since the voters approved the referendum last November to appropriate funds for the library building project, members of the council, its boards, its subcommittees, the town manager, departmental staffs, and many professionals have worked tirelessly to keep this project moving forward. The challenges are many in these economic times, but thoughtful and creative solutions continue to emerge, such as the funding proposal for an appropriation of 1.5 million dollars on the agenda for consideration tonight. Please take action to adopt this resolution. Do all that you can to ensure the completion of this project for the citizens of Bloomfield. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cable James. I live at 33 Hill Forum Road for about 10 years now. I'm a union member for over 16 years. Proud union. I'm a union member for over 16 years. Proud union member. All my skills and training was from the union apprentice and beyond. I'm a journeyman carpenter, foreman, a superintendent on the jobs out there. I believe that the upgrade of the library will, will serve our community well. I have two kids here, and I would like nothing but to see state-of-the-art stuff for my kids and future grandkids ahead. Thank you.
Last call for comments regarding our public hearing and the appropriation of $1.5 million towards our library projects. Last call for public hearing. Last call for any comments on our public hearing.
I appreciate us all getting a chance to speak today, and I appreciate the way you're handling it. And you keep repeating the genius about the funds. And I think we as a group would say, we all support the funds, and we're hoping that once the funds do come through, that we'll get the world.
Thank you so much, sir. And with that, we'll close the public hearing. We're gonna move into our, the structure of tonight, which is our special meeting agenda. So I do want to remind, the public comment section of this is over. And now it is time for the council to do their business regarding the items on our agenda. This is a special meeting, so we are, we are kind of going to stick to the agenda topics that we have on the agenda. We, I'm asking my colleagues to try our best not to deviate from these items. And with that, the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is roll call. For the record, we have all council members present. We have four, five, six present in the room, in the council chambers. And then we have two joining us remotely. So bear with us as we, or bear with me as we try to tag team discussions. Sorry? Oh, three remote, pardon me. All right, I have one quick announcement before we get into new business. The, the announcement is regarding the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, the Community Outreach Task Force. So we had, in regards and pertaining to the recent issues with the library, and I'm so excited that we have fully funded the project and hoping to get to that in new business. There was a lot of community input in regards to having a say in how these funds are allocated. And so with that, and the discussions coming out of the finance committee, the finance chair, Kenneth McClary, Councilman McClary has asked to put together a task force for, to collect data and community input. And I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution for the record. This is the charge for the ARPA Community Outreach Task Force. The committee, the ARPA Community Outreach Task Force, is hereby established. The committee shall consist of no more than seven members. Let it be resolved. The officers and records, the mayor shall appoint a chairperson and vice chairperson. There may be any other officers as the committee shall see fit to establish. Up to three members of the town council shall be non-voting liaisons to the committee, but this is not, this role is not required. The chairperson will work with the town staff liaison assigned by the town manager to keep public record, as per the open meeting law and public record statutes. The term of the office shall be until the funds are administered and obligated. And the membership duties include, the committee shall provide recommendations to the town council on the expenditure of approximately 1.6 million ARPA funds. The committee shall solicit input from the town departments, boards, committees, and commissions. The committee shall solicit input from the Bloomfield community through means including, but not limited to, public forums. And the committee shall develop an evaluation tool to rank these proposals for funding with the assistance of whoever the town manager deems to connect with this committee. The committee shall develop a report to present to the entire Bloomfield Town Council that will include a list of proposals submitted for consideration in addition to recommended for funding. And the committee shall use that recommendation and present that prior to and no later than September 2024, and be prepared to discuss their process and findings at that time. So this committee is to report to the full body of the town council and provide recommendations for the town council to consider. With that, I want to announce the chairperson and the vice chairperson. I am pleased to appoint Ms. Cindy Lloyd as the chairperson of the ARPA Task Force and Outreach for the community. And I am also pleased to appoint Mr. Glenn Cassis as vice chair of the community. And in his role as ABC, I'm excited for what he has to bring to the table. If any members of the public would, are interested in supporting or being a part of this task force, I'm directing you to the town clerk's office to fill out a form or speak with any of your fellow council that you see here or on the screen and communicate your interest. And with that, I see two hands, but this is not a debate or discussion, but I will allow a couple of seconds. I'm not sure, I think Counselor Dubethan Brown had her hand up first.
Thank you. And I, I do understand that it's not a debate or a discussion, but I am a little bit taken aback because while I'm not a member of the finance committee, I did sit through that meeting, and there was a lengthy discussion. And I do believe that the members of the finance committee voted not to go this way. I do believe that at that meeting, the chair of the finance committee, Mr. McClary, gave specific instructions to the consultants to be able to narrow down, give their thoughts and opinions about the information that was received from the survey. So I'm a little bit confused, maybe, of why we're now taking this position. And while I do, while I, while I am very aware that the mayor gets to appoint committees, ad hoc committees, I do also believe that the council also have a say in that. And I do believe that that's in our council rules of procedure.
Counselor Curtin?
Thank you. I'm not gonna repeat the same things that were said by my colleague, but we are, we hired a consultant, and to date, we've paid $14,000 for his expertise in this matter. And to me, to take this out of the finance committee that has a charge to come up with a plan and how to administer this $1.6 million, and as we go by every single day, we're eating into that by paying a consultant. Back when this came up, I advised this body to, instead of hiring a consultant, to go the route and create a committee of committee members. I did mention back then ABC, so I'm a little baffled now that we're going this route when we already received data through the survey that we did. And we know for a fact, some of the issues that are out in the community, and I believe that this council is responsible, as we just passed $104 million budget. And if we can't make a decision on how to administer 1.6, I think we're in a lot of trouble. This process that we're about to embark on, I believe, becomes very political. And it's not the route we wanna go. And in addition to that, we had a committee meeting, the finance committee meeting that I attended, and the members of that committee, when it came up by the chairperson, basically say there wasn't any need for it. So I'm a little confused. This is not the way we wanna conduct business. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Counselor Merritt? Yep.
I've heard this discussion, and I've talked to people about it. I don't remember specifically. I have to look at the minutes of the finance meeting. But I thought about, after talking to people about this, I, I thought that we went to all the trouble of saying, "No, it wasn't proper for the council to grab that 1.6 million just to give it to the library." So we didn't. That money was supposed to be decided how it was spent by the people, not the council. And, and we found some other money for the library, so it wasn't a problem. But why now do you think the councils would take that money back and not let a group of the citizens decide about how it should be spent? I mean, this is supposed to be coming from the citizens of Bloomfield, not from the council. To say that we should take over the decision on what makes up that, who, who gets that 1.6 million? We do have a last word on it, to approve it, but I think it ought to be recommended by an independent, non-political group of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the council that the recommendations will have to come back to council for final say. And the consultant in that work is out of scope for this charge. That is under the purview of our finance director and the town manager as he so sees fit. I don't see any more hands. Let me go to Counselor Politis and then Counselor Mahan.
Thank you. We did speak at length on this in finance, and I really feel like, you know, I really felt during that meeting, and I still feel this now, that, you know, this is a charge that should be taken on by council, whether it be in finance or by the whole town council, that the public hearing should be attended by town council, whether they be special or, you know, council meetings or whatever. And it should be something that we, you know, that we certainly handle on our own. I'm a little concerned, too, that, you know, I'm not sure what these recommendations are gonna come back, but as we look forward to next year's budget, I believe that, you know, if some of this $1.6 million or all of this $1.6 million is not there, then we're gonna be looking at a very large tax increase to the taxpayers in this community. Thank you.
Counselor Mahan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much in agreement with the, my fellow counselors that have spoken previously, especially to the point where we've already allocated $14,000 to consultants to narrow down exactly what that $1.6 million is going to go towards. You know, to, I understand that the, that it is within the mayor's responsibilities and powers to create these, not necessarily subcommittees, but I'm forgetting the, the task force, the ad hoc committees. Thank you very much for that wording, Madam Mayor. The ad hoc committees. But I was hoping that at least we would be able to discuss this within a council meeting so that we can have the entire input of the council. As you said, you know, this is, this meeting isn't for an item such as this. It's for the $1.5 million allocation towards the library. So I, I was really hoping that we'd have more time to really discuss this at length out, outside of the finance committee for the entire council. So, you know, for me, I'm, I'm feeling a bit discouraged that it, it seems like the council is a bit sidestepped within this process.
I'm gonna go to the next one if you don't have a point of order, sir. I'm Counselor... This is an announcement, so it's not a, it's not a discussion point here. And so with that, I'm going to, because I wanna be fair and I wanna allow other counselors to do some brief comments, if not, we'll move on to our new business. Oh, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you so much. As has been stated, the finance subcommittee met and discussed this item. I'm a member of that committee, and it was the recommendation of the committee that we not go in this direction. And so I'm very surprised to see that there is a resolution or article suggesting that this formation take place, when in fact, the overwhelming majority of folks at the finance committee meeting said no. And I also think that although this is an announcement, the council has the right, under our bylaws and procedures, to override a decision of the council's votes. So I, I don't think that it's a foregone conclusion that just because it's listed on this agenda item as an announcement that it's the law. It is not. We as the council have the opportunity to overrule if we have a majority to do so. And I am very disappointed because this is not the direction of the finance subcommittee. We said just the opposite. And for folks to take the position that this is the will of the committee is not accurate, and I think what we should be doing as a whole is going with the majority of our council members and our committee members. And again, this is not what we agreed to. And I will not support it for that reason. Thank you.
Counselor McClary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think there is some misunderstanding or communication relative to whether the finance subcommittee voted on this. The finance subcommittee did not vote on this. And the finance, what the finance subcommittee did do in 2019 and 2020 and 21 was direct the town manager to hire a consultant to go this direction. And so the consultant is there to provide risk management, to make sure that whatever we do with these funds are under the preference of the IRS final rules for what they say should be done with the American Rescue Act dollars. Over the last couple of weeks, there has been a lot of community input relative to this process being political, and that the town council not being transparent and open as to decision-making relative to the American Rescue Act dollars. To my knowledge, the deputy mayor and the mayor attended a meeting with the, with the town manager and decided, without coming to the finance subcommittee, to propose using the $1.4 million of the American Rescue Act funds without talking to the chair of the finance subcommittee or members of the public. And they were gonna take, they attempted to reallocate these funds to the library committee without talking to anyone. And I said absolutely not. That it is gonna be a transparent process and that the people get to decide where the 1.4, $1.6 million is gonna go. And so I called the mayor. I did. And I'm gonna take full responsibility of it and said, "Madam Mayor, to de-politicize this process, let's put this in the hands of the commi- community. Let them go through the process of determining, based on the survey data, that most members of the community, I heard, said was flawed, that it wasn't, it wasn't enough, and that the community engagement and outreach for this process, now the town finance director and a consultant cannot do the engagement process." And so I asked the mayor to appoint a committee of community members to go through the process of figuring out what we should do based on, and make recommendations to the council. That means develop, maybe developing an application, that means doing other community forms that they feel as, they all have networks of people that they can cast out wide. And so I don't think it is a bad idea to put recommendations in the hands of the people. She has two, the mayor has appointed two qualified individuals. ABC has been very instrumental. Mr. Cassis has been very instrumental in watching this process. And I don't mean to, you know, call people out, but I think that those two, Mr. Cassis and Cindy, will do a very good job. And any community member that wanna sit on this community, this task force, to make recommendations to the, to the community. You talk about being political. It's not being political. It's taking it out the hands of the politicians who try to do those backroom deals. And the mayor knows that I'm very opposed to them trying to take that money. And so I think the community will do a good job at making recommendations. And I stand by making my recommendation, asking the mayor to do this. And anybody can criticize me because at the end of the day, I know that the people will do a good job at determining how these funds, or making recommendations on how these funds will benefit their neighbors. Thank you, and have a wonderful night.
I wanna thank the council members for their input. I mean, this is why there's a body of nine people with different opinions and different recommendations. And I would encourage the council members to continue this conversation in regards to the charge. I will distribute it in via our minutes. But we are moving on because we do have folks here that wanna get to the meat of the agenda. We're not allowing any more comment regarding this announcement. So I would ask that we move on and do a business. What is your point of order, sir?
Point of order?
What is your point of order?
I would like to get an opinion from the town attorney, whether the council could take a vote tonight on this matter, whether or not to move forward with your recommendation.
That's not a point of order, sir. But what, what is, we're gonna move on. And I would ask that we defer this to the town attorney for any opinion, but we're going to move forward.
Mayor, the town attorney is right here tonight. You should not be able to circumvent a process. The town attorney is here tonight, and I would like to...
Sir, with all due respect, I am not circumventing a process. I understand that you do not support this item, but that doesn't mean that we are not supporting the process. And so if the town attorney has anything that he would like to say in regards to the rules and procedures and appointing ad hoc members to a committee, he can do so within 30 seconds. Is he on? Mark, are you on?
Yes. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. There are two provisions in your rules of procedure. One pertains to council committees and another pertains to ad hoc committees. And the provisions are different for each. And I don't know why, but that's how they read. For council committees, meaning committees comprised of council members, the mayor designates the members of the council committees subject to the entire council overriding those decisions or that decision. With respect to ad hoc committees as defined in the rules of procedure as limited in time, scope, et cetera, provides that the mayor appoints those individuals to the committee. But there is no similar provision indicating that the council has a role in the appointment of members to an ad hoc committee. Again, I don't know why there was a difference, but there is.
Thank you so much, Attorney Needleman. At this point, we're going to move on. And I encourage the council to adjust the charge, make recommendations for committee members to sit. And if you want to be a liaison to the committee, then I am absolutely open to that. We're going to move on to new business. What we're here for, thank you guys so much for bearing with us through this agenda. Item 2023-09, consider and take action regarding adoption of resolution appropriation of 1.5 million for improvements to the town library. Did we move by Councilman Merritt, seconded by Councilman McClary? I know the deputy mayor has been an advocate and a liaison to the library committee, and I would afford him the opportunity to read the resolution if you would, if you would like.
Resolution of the town council, of the town of Bloomfield appropriating 1.5 million dollars for improvements to town libraries. Resolved that the town appropriate 1.1 million 500,000 for additional cause, cost caused by the current inflationary environment relating to construction, furnishing and equipping of a new Prosser Library and renovations to the P. Faith McMahon Wintonbury Library. Contemplated to include but not limited to demolition, design, construction, site work, parking, lighting, security, furnishings, equipment, materials, utilities, landscaping, energy saving and renewable energy features, permitting costs, project management, including but not limited to a clerk of the works administrative costs, architect fees, engineering and other consultant fees. And such appropriation being funded with a 1 million dollar grant received from the state of Connecticut Public Library Construction Grant for the Prosser Library Project and 356,358 dollars from the town of Bloomfield's Capital Nonrecurring Fund and 143,642 dollars from the fiscal year 2023 General Fund Operating Budget. And it be further resolved that the below transfer of appropriations be approved. The amounts below are free from encumbrances in the 2023 Capital Fund Budget. From, do I need to read all the numbers? Do we need all the numbers from the accounts?
I think maybe as read in our agenda packet or something in that reference.
All right. So from the department function, the basketball court lights, 5,364.38. IT improvements, 60,000 dollars. MUTCD road signage, 6,000. Golf course improvements, 10,000. Open space acquisition, 10,000. Mountain Avenue sidewalk, 7,028 cents. Library exploratory design, 2,921.99. Complete streets, 1,197.89. Townwide property revow, 2019, 14,072.49. Council chambers renovation, 737 dollars. COVID-19 safety improvements, 3,000 dollars. Will apart guardrails, 1,069.45. 194 Terry Plains Road Demo, 553 dollars. Property revaluation, 2024, 34,441.52. And the town hall mechanical room floor, 200,000 dollars for a total of 356,358 dollars. The above amounts are to be transferred to the following department in the 2023 Capital Fund Budget. Transfer to the library building project of 356,358 dollars. And it be further resolved that an appropriation in the town capital nonrecurring fund be established in the amount of 356,358 dollars funded from the above transfers of the project, library building project.
Thank you. What a mouthful. But I just do want to point out before we get in the discussion phase of our motion that's on the floor. I do want to thank not only the deputy mayor, the entire town council for their work in this matter, the staff, Carrie Raleigh for her immense work to try to pull different pockets of money to support this building project, our chair of the library building committee, Mark Wiseman, for all his advocacy, his work, his weekend work and his expertise to the matter and his leadership, as well as Elizabeth Lane, our library director, and her wonderful staff for really advocating for why we're here tonight. And I do want to thank you, and I want to thank the town manager, Nancy as well, the procurement, the staff liaison to this library building committee, to all of the work that has happened to get to this point, which was tremendous. And with that, I just want to repeat that the motion was moved by Councilman Merritt, seconded by Councilman McClary. Is there any additional discussion before we move the question? Councilor Beetham Brown?
Um, I, that was a legacy hand. However, I do want to say thank you to Carrie because I know that she did speak, she did work tirelessly to try to find that money. And I know that the concern of the council was to make sure that the ARPA funds was secure. So I just want to thank them for their hard work and can't wait to see the library.
Any other discussion points before we move the question? Any other discussion? Councilman McClary.
I think you had to want to thank Carrie for accepting my phone calls and the work. Deputy Mayor has the liaison to the library building committee and the work that all of the staff, Elizabeth, Nancy, the entire building committee for doing this. I'm proud of the council for funding this. I look forward to this project moving forward on time, on schedule. And hopefully we'll have some PLA. Thank you.
The question has been called. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or raise your virtual hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to the town of Bloomfield. With that, the last item on our agenda is a 2023-10, consider and take action regarding the endorsement, the use of a project labor agreement for the town libraries project. We have some, we have a Mr. Joe Toner here, executive director, who has a few handouts for us in regards to the presentations that were presented previously in subcommittee. And I would ask that we keep this as concise and quickly as possible, sir. And I do appreciate your time and attention to that. Just want to point out that we have Kimberly, Kimberly Glassman on the line. I'm not sure if you have, if she's going to start or she had anything quick. Yes, sir. Okay.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor, counselors. We're going to try to do this in a hybrid, which I do as quick as we can. I think we've been through this a few times. We do appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you and on behalf of our brothers and sisters here, we appreciate the time. So I'm Joe Toner, I'm the executive director of the Building Trades Council. And one of the things I like to start by saying, I think there's three key factors here in considering a project labor agreement, which aren't in the pamphlet. I think number one is you're going to have a quality pool of qualified construction workers to work on your project. During the uncertainty that we face between inflation and supply chain issues, it's very important to make sure that you could be able to mobilize anywhere from 20 to 30 construction workers within a matter of days to get these projects done and keep them on schedule. That's what the men and the women, the building trades provide. Our training is second to none. And I think that is probably one of the most valuable, valuable issues that we face going forward in the construction industry. As you guys are well aware with the inflationary costs that are out there, making sure that you get qualified people to get your projects done are what we specialize in. So that's, that's a key, key, key factor for us. The second part is very important is to making sure our brothers and sisters here tonight are going to be able to work on the project. Recycling money within the town of Bloomfield is very important. Our proposal is 25% resident requirements that will be on the jobs. Just think of all that money that is going to be recirculated within the economy with skilled men and women working on the project from Bloomfield. And the third part, I think is something that some of our brothers and sisters spoke earlier on is the workforce development piece for Yolanda. You know, we have our own pre-apprentice program now, the Building Trades Training Institute. Well, we'll speak a little bit further on, but we're going to be able to create a pipeline in workforce development for Bloomfield residents to enter into not a job, not to work for one company, to a career in an industry that pays well, the unionized construction industry, which is going to provide a livable wage, health benefits and secure retirement. So it's a win-win situation. I know some is ARPA money for other municipalities. They're looking at doing some training opportunities. We do training on our own. We pay, spend 25 million dollars a year in our, in our apprenticeship training programs. We subsidize it on training, 25 million dollars a year collectively we spend in the building trades to train our own people. And that's collectively bargained money that we defer to put to training. So we believe in the training, we believe in the opportunity. So I'll quickly jump into the first page. And I don't know, Sharon, if you could share the screen with Kimberly? And then, so maybe some of the folks virtually could see the presentation? Okay, Kimberly, if Kimberly could hear me, if you could share so the counselors virtually could follow along, that'd be great. So the first page is, what is a project labor agreement? It's a pre-hire agreement between the municipality and the Building Trades Council, which is here. And I'd be remiss if I don't recognize Ted Grabowski. Ted Grabowski is the president of the Greater Hartford Britain Building Trades Council. So he is the president that stands for this council here in Bloomfield. So I want to make sure Teddy's recognized. He'll be very involved in the process. So it guarantees the only municipality of a pool of qualified people, which I've mentioned. It's the only way a municipality can ensure that residents will work on their projects without investing major resources into ordinance and modern system. It's the only way municipalities can ensure that the residents entering to a trade on these projects that give them career opportunities, not just short-term jobs, which we spoke about. And specific language in a project labor agreement allows non-union, union workers the ability both to perform on the work. So we have typically, I mentioned a little bit on the apprenticeship training side, our apprenticeship training side, their four-year apprentice training programs. A few local unions do five years, and I believe one does six, but the majority of our craft do four years. So what you, what it would look like is you'd be enrolled into the apprenticeship program. You'd become a member of that local union. And then through the years, your pay would start at whatever percentage that local union has you at as an apprentice. And you graduate within four years, typically to journeyman status. Where are the programs? What are the programs? There's, there's 14 different crafts in the building trades that have apprenticeship programs. And I'm going to kind of go through them quick here. The sheet metal workers has a facility, the iron workers, the insulators. And we could just kind of go through these quick in lieu of time, electricians, operating engineers, the plumbers and pipe fitters, the Connecticut Labor's District Council, the painters, allied trades. So we, every single one of those slides that I just quickly went over in lieu of time are funded strictly by the local unions and the JTCs. And one of the things with the JTCs, the JTCs are joint apprenticeship training committees. They're made up of both labor and management. So the curriculum that these young folks or the folks that are entering into the building trades, their curriculum is generated by both labor and management. So contractors, signatory contractors sit on these JTCs along with the local unions. And they craft the language and the curriculum that the folks need in the industry. So that's interesting. It's a labor management thing funded by the labor side. So if Kimberly can, I don't know if Kimberly's sharing the screen is, did we lose Kimberly? Oh, here's Kimberly. So I'm going to hand it off. Kimberly Glassman is the executive director of the FFC, Foundation for Fair Contracting. And she's going to do a piece here on some of the stuff that, that are questions in the industry that I think Kimberly could address. So Kimberly?
Thank you. Do, is it okay if I share my screen? Okay. Great. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Great. Um, so now I've spoke, I know I've been before some of the council, counselors, but not the council at large. So for those who don't know me, my name is Kimberly Glassman. I am the director of the Foundation for Fair Contracting of Connecticut. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(5) labor management organization, which means that we represent both folks in the Building Trades Council, but also a number of contractor associations as well. We've been in Connecticut since 1994. And the purpose of this organization at its core is to monitor government contracts for compliance with, with good, with good standards, particularly with prevailing wage standards, apprenticeship standards, occupational licensing standards, those standards that we think help deter bad players, unscrupulous companies from exploiting workers. We help to create a level playing field in the public construction industry. I've been the director here in Connecticut since 2011. And I serve on the board of our national organization, the National Alliance for Fair Contracting. It is an honor to be here tonight. Thank you for inviting the building trades and my organization to present to you this evening. I know I am also a local official on my own town council, and I know how difficult the job is and the stressors with the budgetary decisions that you make. So, and it's a totally unpaid gig. So I appreciate all of the time and resources you spend in your own community. So the director, Joe Toner, asked me to speak to some of the studies out there regarding project labor agreements. Our organization's position is that we support project labor agreements. The reason why we support project labor agreements is because of the enforcement mechanisms that are included on a PLA project. Because the building trades negotiate this agreement with the contracting authority and the general contractor, construction management firm, they abide, they, they, they set the rules to abide by these wage standards, these prevailing wage standards and open competitive bidding standards, licensing standards. So it, it's, it takes a bit of load off of my organization to know that this is a project where these standards are being adhered to. And there's a lot of stopgaps if a company isn't, isn't abiding by it or a worker feels that they've been grieved against in some way. So what I'm speaking to are some of the myths that we hear about project labor agreements. The big one, the big elephant, is that PLA's cost owners more money. And there have been countless studies that show that that's not true. Academic studies. And we've included in this PowerPoint just a couple of them. But there's a lot more academic research out there. I'm certainly happy to provide that offline to any of, any of the counselors here. The first that were, that I just wanted to mention is from Michigan State. This, there was a study done by Michigan State with the University of Tennessee to study project labor agreements. And that study concluded that they found that project labor agreement, that they did not find evidence that a, that a project labor agreement increases school construction costs. that they did not find evidence that a pro- that a project labor agreement increase, increases school construction costs. Another study was from Cornell University. And uh, again, they found that there was no evidence to support claims that project labor agreements um limit a pool of bidders or drive up construction costs. Um, and they said that they are not actually union-only agreements. And we know that here in Connecticut. There's actually uh, case law that supports that anybody can bid, union or non-union can bid a project labor agreement job. Um, but that's another myth that we do here. So the Cornell University um study uh upheld that anybody can bid these projects. And again, they do not raise construction costs. And this is from San Diego, uh, Sandy, San Diego, California, their school district. They did a review of um some of the PLA's that they had done. They found that there had been no increase in the cost of the winning bids for school construction projects. And they found that under PLA's, the project completion time was faster and allowed that for the district to experience less overhead. And we actually know that. We have a success story. Uh, I, I'm not trying to steal Joe's uh thunder on that success story, so I'll let him tell that one um about Meriden. Um, and lastly, we want to mention look here again in um, in Connecticut, the town of Killingley. Their um town manager issued this letter to the president of the New London County Building Trades Council after uh their experience with, with the PLA on a school. And they indicated how many man-hours were reported on that project and how many resident hours. Sixty-one percent of the apprentice hours were from Wyndham County residents. Uh, the local employment goals had been a win-win for the community. And this is exactly what, why, why we tout project labor agreements. From the FFC's point of view, we want to make sure that uh, workers are not being exploited. But ultimately, we, like you've heard from um all of your, all the public testimony this evening, we will also want to make sure that these dollars get recycled back into your local community. So this was a, this was something we could definitely hang our hat on, on the win-win. That's exactly how we feel about project labor agreements. Um. So uh, I don't know, I'll certainly leave it to Joe. I'm, I'm happy to talk about Meriden, or I can.
Yeah, go on, why don't you do Meriden, Kim? Why don't you do Meriden quick?
Very quickly.
Yeah, quickly.
Sure, sorry.
You know, maybe we'll skip it, Kim, because I want to have Yolanda do a quick, a quick thing. So we don't.
Okay.
So just quickly, all right, thank you, Kimberly.
Sure, thank you.
No, can you, can you maybe, can you follow along in the slides as we go?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. So we'll, we'll try to be quick. So I want to make sure Yolanda gets in front to, to speak about the workforce development. But um ju- just one more thing I'd, I'd be remiss if I did not mention. And also in the paperwork is the program we have with the helmets or hard hats. Returning veterans have direct entry into our apprenticeship training programs. And we're going to make sure that's incorporated here. So give back to the folks that serve for us, right? So at this time, I'd like to introduce one of our friends from the building trades who hopefully is going to be working for the building trades in the near future, I hope. But so as I mentioned, we have the Building Trades Training Institute, which is a pre-apprentice training program, which works in conjunction with the building trades. Um, Yolanda Rivera is going to be our director uh in September sometime. But she's been doing uh workforce development with the building trades for over twenty years. So I'll have Yolanda come up quick and go over some of the benefits that we offer.
And thank you for the opportunity to have me come in front of you to basically share our experience regarding workforce development. I know that in hearing all the workers here, right, we talked about the benefits of a PLA. We talked about safety. I, when I began in nineteen ninety-eight, I began as a community organizer, actually in Hartford around uh organizing our Adrian's Landing. And the importance of having Hartford residents, uh, you know, benefit from, you know, besides uh the, the buildings and the brick and mortar to basically uh spend capital also basically in, in human capital, human development. So um, you know, we were uh successful in, in organizing and creating a program which, you know, I have had also the privilege of managing for the last twenty-three years. I truly believe that people who live in an, in a, in a community where a project is being built, they should have the right to also work there. So, you know, kind of, I hear all of you when you say you're working, you know, far away and you really want this project so that you can come home and actually kind of, you know, relax and be able to, you know, not spend so, so much gas. I, uh, or money in gas, I, I totally understand you. But, you know, then Joe talked about the importance of the registered apprenticeship training programs and, and and the ability to, to teach and prepare people. Well, this is basically, this is where I began because it's also very important to prepare individuals who may be interested in entering occupations in the construction field, but they don't know how and they need that guidance. So uh, you know, I am very happy that the Connecticut State Building Trades basically have uh incorporated, and pretty soon we're going to be operating the Connecticut State Building Trades Institute. This is going to be a feeder program to their unionized registered apprenticeship training programs. Meaning that we have, you know, in the communities, people that really are interested in entering these occupations, but they don't know how. So we're going to be there to be able to guide them and through a pre-employment process, you know, they're going to understand what does it take to be an applicant into a registered apprenticeship training program. They need to understand that they need to have a high school diploma, that they need to be eighteen and above, that they need to have a driver's license, that they need reliable transportation. And sometimes, you know, people really have uh, you know, difficulties putting all of these things in place. Kind of, you know, when I look at Crystal, I remember when she came in and she was, you know, a young adult that knew that she wanted to um enter an apprenticeship training program. But actually she was, I, I remember the conversations with the case manager, and I know that she was apprehensive. And we really had to kind of push her and be able to guide her through that process. So that is usually what needs to happen with our young people. They are young people, you know, need to understand that, you know, especially if you're not going to college, that this four, four-year degree in the construction field is going to give them a career pathway that, you know, they'll be able to get good wages, they'll be able to get benefits, they'll be able to have pride in something that they have done, you know, when, when I heard, you know, kind of you drive by and you see that building and you say, hey, I helped build this. When you're showing it to your children, then your, your children see you, you know, um, being able to come home and take care of your household and provide for your family. I also see what happens and, and usually, you know, I hope that, you know, here in Bloomfield, you guys are able to retain the residents that are going to be uh, you know, entering this registered apprenticeship training programs and are going to be um earning, you know, these wages and benefits. So this is what I, this is what the Connecticut Trades Institute actually brings to you is the opportunity not, not only to have connections into these registered apprenticeship training programs, you know, uh, to actually build career pathways, but also put in place a pre-employment uh process for your residents to come in that may be interested in entering construction, but they really don't know which occupation and which way to go. So that we'll be able to guide them through that process, you know, um specifically for this project under that project labor agreement. So uh, you know, just like Joe said, we're hoping to be operational in September. And uh, you know, we're going to be putting individuals through a process of outreach and recruitment. They're going to be assessed, they're going to be provided case management, they're going to be provided supportive services in terms of, you know, financial assistance to help them get at times, you know, even a learner's permit. You know, the tools and work gear that they're going to need in order for them to go to work and assimilate to that work environment right away. They're going to be provided uh, you know, assistance and guidance into the various apprenticeship training programs of their choice. And then they are going to be uh provided retention services. Because as you know, when a, when apprentices go in during that first year, that first year is very difficult, especially when, you know, number one, sometimes they begin school and then they have to go to work, and then they have to wait to go to work. Or they become laid off, and then all of a sudden, you know, for someone that has never been laid off, you know, we, we think that, uh, you know, it's a, it's a failure. But then when they become laid off, you know, they know, they need to understand that they have a hiring hole that they need to go back and register so that they can continue to work. So uh, you know, through that process and that institute, we basically help them understand the system that they're getting into, the industry that they're getting into, so that they can be prepared for all the challenges that they face during, during that first year.
Thank you so much. You have a, a, a.
I'd like to make the motion.
Second.
The, the motion has been moved by Counselor Merritt and seconded by both Counselor McClary and Counselor Harrington. And just for the record, um, can one of you fine gentlemen read the motion for the record? Right here.
Resolve. At the town, excuse me. Resolve that the town council endorses use of a project labor agreement for the town libraries project and directs and authorizes Downs Construction Company as a construction manager to enter into a PLA with the Greater Hartford New Britain Building Trades Council for the Town Libraries Project and incorporate Bloomfield set-aside policies and bid documents.
Thank you so much. I, um, are there any items of discussion? Um, Counselor Mahan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm happy for everyone that came in today and uh, you know, chimed in on the PLA. Though the uh intent of this meeting was for us to discuss the one-point-five-million-dollar allocation, I see that uh, you guys came out in full force to support that measure. Um, my only problem is um that, you know, the fact that the intention of this meeting was to allocate that one-point-five-million. Um, and it says they're right on, right on the front of the agenda here, um, that that was the intention. Our, all of our residents didn't have the same opportunity that everyone in this room so far uh had to really chime in on the PLA in a town council format. It's, it's a bit unfair um for us to put out and broadcast that this is the intention of the of the meeting that we're going to have. Um, and not allow our residents, our full body, all of our residents to really chime in on this item. Um, with that, I'm personally not comfortable with uh taking any action on this item uh in this meeting because we didn't have, all of our residents didn't have the same opportunity to speak on this item. Um, as it says right here, the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit public input regarding the proposed additional appropriation. I've had a resident email me stating that there's no public comment section and thus broadcasting their uh opinions to me via email because they didn't have or didn't see the opportunity to use this venue to speak towards other items. In fact, uh, when I received notice of this meeting on Tuesday, it was also stated to me that the sole intention of this meeting was to discuss the one-point-five-million-dollar allocation. It wasn't until I saw the agenda where I realized that this item was uh almost snuck onto the agenda without uh real notice to the public, uh, without real notice to all of our residents. Uh, so I don't feel comfortable making any action or uh moving on any action on this item uh today without full input from the rest of our residents. Like I said, I thank you all very much for coming. I appreciate uh you guys speaking on your behalf and your experiences. Um, you know, but uh Bloomfield uh has a lot more residents than just the individuals sitting in this room.
Uh, thank you so much for those comments. Just to point out for the record, this meeting notice, as per our charter and our rules and procedures, was sent out like all of our other council agendas are set out within the timeframe allotted by um again, our open meeting laws. So no violations were made. Again, this is a special meeting. The public hearing is before the special meeting, so it's two separate items uh that we experienced. So it's not within the agenda. So just wanted to clarify and correct that particular information. We're going to go to councilman.
So I, I, I didn't, I didn't.
Counselor, my merit is next. Thank you, sir.
Point of order, I did not state anything to the contrary. So I, please don't, you know, uh pivot my words in that, in that way. I, I didn't say anything to the contrary to what you said. What I was just saying to, to clarify um was that, you know, the agenda strictly states to solicit public input regarding the proposed additional appropriation of the one-point-five-million. It did not state of the one-point-five-million and uh, and to solicit opinion on the PLA or the pub, project labor agreement. Now, if it stated that and all of our residents knew that we're soliciting opinion on not only the one-point-five-million and the PLA, I would have no problem moving today. But without that, it, it literally says it right there on the, on the agenda. Without that, that makes me a bit uncomfortable making, uh, having any action today on this specific item.
Yep, Counselor Mahan, I, I thank you for those comments. Again, the public hearing is for the item twenty-twenty-three-dash-zero-nine, and it wasn't in reference to twenty-twenty-three-dash-ten. Uh, Counselor Merritt.
We don't have any public comment on dash-ten.
Thank you, sir. I particularly, I particularly like this agreement because we have tried over the last twenty years or so to get um minority participation and town participation, especially minority participation in our building projects. And even the private ones, uh, and we have very, done very poorly at that. It's not been accomplished. This looks like something that will work and that we can get uh both minority representation and uh uh town people working on it. And so I, I think that's a really good thing. And I was part of, and didn't like it, the agreements that were made stated on the apartments and uh some of the other public buildings that we've built. And we just have not been successful up till now in gaining good participation. So I, I think this is a, a, a much better way of doing it. Uh, it looks like it'll be successful. So I just, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harrington.
So I, uh, excuse me, I do believe that uh we are moving in the right direction with uh, uh, this resolution because I previously worked with the City of Hartford's Minority Business Enterprise Program prior to the uh Croson versus uh Richmond uh uh situation. So uh, it was very important at that time, and we were doing a lot of work on state capital and other, you know, places like that. We were trying to generate more minority participation in terms of contracting, in terms of individuals. Uh, there was a lot of uh, uh road work, so we're looking for minority contractors relative to that. I would hope at some future point that the town of Bloomfield would generate a list of minority contractors that we could reach out to, to apply for these many different types of contracts. But in the meantime, I think it's important, uh, I appreciate the fact that the union did come today in support of this measure. Um, and I just believe that it's, it's a step in the right direction. Um, I, I understand uh Counselor Mahan's uh concern about the overall public. Um, and I, I can't really speak to that at, at, at this moment, but I believe in terms of the, the fact that we were working on this for some time in terms of other meetings leading up to this uh, uh moment. So I'm very happy that uh we have decided to move forward and that uh the unions will be represented. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor McClary?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, to echo Counselor Harrington's remarks and Counselor Merritt's remarks about this, we, we struggle really um bad at making sure that we hit those participation marks on, particularly on um projects that were receiving public funding, um, i.e. tax abatements. And I'm one of the proponents of if we give taxpayer dollars out to corporations, that residents of the town benefit, whether it's through community uh benefit agreements, through project labor agreements. Um, I fully, fully support those. And so um this right here is this action that we may take tonight um is five years in the making. Um, in twenty-seventeen, uh, the carpenters' unions, the laborers came out and overwhelmingly supported uh the new generation of democratic leaders. And um over the last five years, um, I'm gonna be honest, we failed the same union men and women who came out and supported us um five years ago. Uh, and I believe that tonight is the right step um forward um to make sure that people who live in this community can work, play, spend their monies, have their kids see that they built these facilities, take pride in the facilities that their parents and grandparents and uncles and cousins have built. Um, and so I will be very, very, and Joe know this, uh, Joe Toner knows this uh a lot, that I will be very happy to cast my vote. Um, yes, this meeting is in order. Um, we had a public hearing on one item. And then the next item is this item. We've had two meetings related to um the project labor. We've had two meetings related to the project labor agreement and admin and education and we didn't have anyone besides the gentleman who was arguing that this is not in decency and order, vote against it. And so tonight, I will be voting to support this project labor agreement and I hope that this is a precedent set for it. So when we build any public building or use public taxpayer dollars on any projects, that union men and women and minority contractors are able to be working on those projects. So thank you for coming out tonight to speak and advocate for your community. I am listening. Thank you.
Counselor Curtin?
Thank you. I'm going to pretty much take this opportunity since there is no public comments for counselors, which is very strange, the way how this whole agenda was drafted tonight. And I agree with my colleagues, Counselor Mahan, on this. This was rushed through. I have questions for both the town manager, the deputy mayor and the mayor in regards to the process, because I think what's going on here tonight, and Counselor Mahan said it perfectly, you're overshooting the importance of this decision tonight by ramming something through without full transparency with the council. I support the unions, I support what Mr. Tonner and everyone is doing. I will vote on this tonight, but there needs to be transparency in how the mayor and Counselor Ken McClary operate on this body. You're, you're two of nine members on this body and the way you're operating is underfitting. And I would say to my colleagues in this council-
Sir, I will remind you of having integrity and decorum and respect when calling out your fellow colleagues, as we give you the same, you, please proceed.
I just referred to, to both the mayor and Counselor Carey to run in a muck on this body. I, I also want to say tonight that while my colleagues is talking about the unions and everything, we have members of our community living in apartment complex for months and months, deplorable condition, and this body has done nothing to help them. So I have questions pertaining to that with the town manager and the mayor who attended a meeting at the complex and did nothing. These are our residents and we should be taking care of them. They're in deplorable environment within that apartment complex and we have done nothing to help them, but we sit here tonight and talk about doing what's right. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're referring to Representative Gibson and myself being invited to the union launch of Wedgewood Apartments. And so we have been in close communications with many of the residents and I talk to them very frequently. I don't recall a meeting with the, for the record, I do not recall a meeting with the town manager and myself at Wedgewood Apartments, so I'm not quite sure. But I do, on a side note, and then we're going to get back on topic, I do know that the town manager is working very hard to get stakeholders together to address that very concern. So we appreciate the passion that is coming through Counselor Curtin on your end, as many of us do want a solution for the Wedgewood residents. I'm going to go to Counselor DeBeethen Brown.
Thank you. Um, I've known Mr. Tonner for a while, so I'm very glad to hear his presentation again and to see the support. I am a product of a union. I, I ran a union shop for years, both inside Local 35 and outside Local 42. So I am very supportive of the union and I think this is a very good step. I would hope that we don't stop here with this PLA, but that we do go on to putting in a set aside program where true minority contractors will also be able to benefit, eat poor bricks here in the town of Bloomfield. While I am a little taken aback about how it got on the agenda and the conversations around it, I do support the union and I think Mr. Tonner knows that. And that's the only reason why I'm going to vote for it tonight. I do hope and pray that we can get a little bit better in the way that we do things as we are serving the entire town of Bloomfield. Thank you.
Counselor, excuse me, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you so much. I just want to say that, sitting here, and one of the things that is most important to me, when we look at the PLA, when we look at the library building project as the committee negotiated with the construction manager, the library building committee put in a 40% minority contractor presence at the library building project. And it's very important to me that we all win, right? Because that's why we're here. We want Bloomfield residents to win. And, and so when we first heard the presentation, I was, one of my concerns was cost, right? Is this going to cost us more on the labor side if we bring in the union? We got information and found out that it won't. And so I am very happy that we are going to be able to marry both sides. But I do want to make sure that our minority contractors are not pushed out of the process. And I, I think we have to find a way to make sure that everyone wins, because that's what's most important. And again, with the competing interest, I was really taken back and really impressed with Ms. Crystal, not just you, but others, you know, when you talked about the importance and how that apprenticeship has changed your, your being, your life. And, and so as someone who's been in this town for a long time and, and I am all about making sure that our people get what they deserve and what they need and looking out for the residents of Bloomfield, I'm happy that the members of the union came out tonight in full force, right? Because that's what we want to see. We want to see engagement. And I support the PLA. I do want to make sure that our minority contractors, you know, get a piece of the pie, because if you, you heard one of, at least one of the comments talked about the, the lack of minority contractors in projects in Bloomfield. And this is a big project and I think this is a start, but I, I am happy that we have all of our folks coming out to make sure that what I call home rule, right, that we take care of our residents, our residents get to work and the town wins. It's kind of a quid pro quo, you know? Our, our local residents come out and do the work and our citizens benefit from that and we all win. So again, thank you all for coming out. I am looking forward to the library project, for us breaking ground and to seeing many of you taking part in that work. So thank you.
The question has been called and before I called the question, I want to thank the, the executive director, Mr. Tonner, Yolanda, Kimberly, for educating this council, this body in many different occasions on what the benefits of this pro- this program, this project can bring to the, to the council. I'm, I'm sitting here looking at Mr. Kenneth Lasalle and we actually went to school together. He live on Rockwell and you actually work on the bridge right off of Park Ave that every, we're going to get that, we're going to get through that soon, we're going to open that up. But so that is, to me demonstrates the exact possibilities that can come from this workforce development initiative. All our children are not college bound. We know, we know, we struggle from 18 to 24 years of age, finding a career trajectory. And I'm just so fortunate that this council is behind this initiative. And then with that, we will call the question. I'm going to go ahead and call Roll, because I just want to get that on the record. I will start for, with Counselor Mahan.
I'm abstaining from voting due to reasons I discussed during my comment.
Counselor Merritt? Counselor Curtin?
Aye.
Counselor DeBeethen Brown?
Yes.
Counselor McClary?
Yes.
Counselor Harrington?
Yes.
Counselor Politis?
Yes.
For the record, that was a yes, sir. Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
The mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you all so much for coming. Thank you for joining online. Have a great night.